Hello and welcome to another edition of Tough Talk. My name is Medina Azaydin. The recent pronouncement by Minister of State for Petroleum Resources Chief Jimmy Pree Silva that the downstream petroleum sector has been deregulated since March 19th, 2020 had further worsened uncertainty in the industry. According to stakeholders in the industry, despite claims by the government that the deregulation has kicked off, there has been no significant change in the downstream sector as the Nigerian National Petroleum Corporation, NMPC, is still the sole importer of Premier Motorspeed, which is also known as petrol, into the country and still fixes the price at which it sells to deport owners. Now, this and more are some of the issues I will be discussing with my guests after the break. Stay with us. Welcome back. My guest is a civil engineer by profession with over 25 years' experience in oil and gas. He is the chairman board of trustees of Independent Petroleum Marketers Association of Nigeria, ITMAN, and also the group executive director of Corporate Services Nipho PRC. Adadi Aminu Abdul Ghadir Mamba, Sebken Hwumi Adama, many thanks for joining us on the program.
Thank you.
All right. Let's start with the deregulation. Some people will say it's a new jacket deregulation, but for you, is it a full deregulation, a partial deregulation, or a new job deregulation?
Well, first and foremost, when you are talking about deregulation, the industry must have a guideline, and the guideline should be the PIB. Why is the PIB? The PIB must be in place for it to guide the industry. As far as I'm concerned, what the industry is facing today is price modulation. And price modulation is a factor of government agencies trying to cope with the current prevailing situations. Now, if we take NMPC as a case study, being the national oil company, I believe they are saddled with the responsibility of providing the product to this country as a last resort supplier. Sometimes, they are also being sandwiched in between the government policies vis-à-vis the consumers who actually elected the government into power. So in this kind of scenario, it is a very difficult task for government establishment or we, the private sector, to have a clear-cut policies within which to navigate. So personally, I feel that until when PIB is in place, then we'll begin to talk about deregulation or no deregulation.
But the PIB is taking ages.
What do we do? There are people who are saddled with that responsibility, and that's the National Assembly. So the ball is in their court. They're supposed to legislate over it, take the inputs of all the stakeholders, and agree at a certain point and pass it. Then that becomes the dictionary, and that becomes the guideline. With that, then only we can fashion out which way, which kind of deregulation we are going to face. But today, anybody can come out and say X or Z. But why is the benchmark?
So for you, what should a full deregulation look like?
Well, for me, I always converse for faces deregulation within which the common man should be taken into cognizance in whichever process that government wants to deregulate, because there are a lot of factors in deregulation. Deregulation, it affects every country with its own peculiarities. So Nigeria, if you take Nigeria as a case study, we have a lot of agencies under NMPC or under Minister of Petroleum, so to say. And those agencies all have different responsibilities. If you take PPR, it's an agency that is saddled with the responsibility of price fixing. If you take DPR, DPR is there that allocates or gives out licenses, technical inspections, and what have you. If you take Petroleum Equalization Forum Board, this is an agency that was created since 1973 through a military decree that prices should be equalized all over the country. And I think these are the three major agencies that affect the downstream and the upstream as well. So all this, the PIB will have to span out the function of each and every agency. Then only the kind of deregulation that Nigeria will face will be known to the country.
So for you now, what you want us to have is a partial deregulation, is that what you're saying, or a phased deregulation?
A phased deregulation is what is good for Nigeria, and not only that. We, I think, the Minister of Petroleum needs to galvanize the industry, bring everybody together, and come out with a clear-cut policy within which the process of deregulation should kick-start. So we're not affecting some of the agencies like PPR and Petroleum Equalization Forum Board, because what I do not want to see is a situation where we're having multiple prices across the country, within one country. That will affect the morale of the common man, and that will also distort the essence of establishing the Petroleum Equalization Forum Board itself. And finally, and most importantly, the money that is being used to offset this transport equalization in Nigeria are consumers' money, it's not government money. It is consumers' money. So supposing if government wants to deregulate fully or whatever they will do, they have to tell us exactly how Petroleum Equalization Forum Board will function, so that the price distortion should not take place in this country.
Are you saying that they just came up with the policy without involving the stakeholders?
Well, I think it's not adequate, as I said, because the PIB bill has not been passed. So there is no documents, there is no guideline to which that will govern the process of this deregulation.
What kind of guidelines are you looking forward to as a player in the industry?
You see, when you are talking about petroleum product, you are talking about investor. When you are talking about investors, you are talking about somebody who is putting his or her own resources, and most of these resources are quite colossal. These are resources that have been collected from banks, and interest has been charged upon. So whosoever is going to invest his money certainly will know exactly where to recoup this money from. So I set an example with Petroleum Equalization, so that we will not be confused either by government or by Nigerian, or by Nigerian stakeholders, or by consumers. That Petroleum Equalization Forum Board is an agency that is funded on consumers' fund. It's not a budgetary fund. So government does not put tank of gold there. It's you and me that contribute this money that is being used to equalize. So therefore, government should focus its mind on how to source this product and distribute it to the masses within a limit that they will not be stretched off. That's my concern number one, as far as the downstream is concerned. For the upstream and the midstream, that's a different ballgame that does not affect the masses directly.
How do you react to people who say, "We're tired of faced deregulation, we're tired of modulation, we want a total deregulation of the industry, so that if the players, you know, can have a level playing field, and then the issue of subsidy or corruption associated with it," you know, will all be put...
Yeah, you see, when you talk about corruptions or sharp practices, all these are relative terms. Depending on the understanding of the speaker. If you talk about corruption in oil and gas industry, in which context? Who is corrupting who? And who is alleging that there is corruption? Because petroleum product is a product that is being processed through finance. There is no process that does not involve finance. So as far as I'm concerned, if government wants to come out with a policy of full deregulation, I don't have issues to it. My only observation on it is that the process, things that have been working before should not be distorted. If you want to add something, add something new that will improve upon what has been in existence.
What are the things that are working before? Sorry, I'm just joking.
For example, as I told you, see, when you talk about the equalization, as I told, it's a consumers' money, it's not government money. So you see, if somebody is talking that it's not necessary, then by the time it is out, you will discover that the product you will be buying in Meduguri, Sokoto, or even Niger Delta, adds this. You will buy it at premium, it will be different from those that are at the coastal areas. Even the coastal areas, not all of them will benefit, because those difficult areas also in Niger Delta would have difficulties in accessing this product without equalization. And as I keep on repeating, this equalization form is not government money, it's consumers' money. It's built into the template for the consumers to pay for what he is consuming. So therefore, I would like to see a process of deregulation that will come out that is transparent, with all the nitty-gritty is clearly spelled out, so that the stakeholders will all converge together and agree to it and pursue it with vigor, so that it will affect the common minimally. But if we will just dream or wake up one morning and say, "X should be done," or "Y should be removed," then there are issues. So this is my understanding on it.
The government is saying, "Right now, they are broke because of the COVID-19 pandemic, and we're technically in a recession." So if we go for a phased deregulation, it means government has to come in at some point to pay subsidy, and I'm sure that's what they are running away from it. How do we balance having a phased deregulation and also human phase when it comes to petroleum product?
You see, I've said in other for us that deregulation in phases, a process that goes with enhancement in efficiency. I believe that if the process of deregulation kick-start in earnest, the private companies will be able to save costs in other areas. I don't think with the price of the crude today, I don't think that government needs to put resources like before. Now, the issue here is that when the crude was at its bare minimum, if at that point we had a full deregulation, our prices of products should have been well below 120. Our price then should have been in the region of 80, 90 naira. We would have had cash on that. By today, the correct pricing of petroleum product shouldn't have reached even the 143 naira, 50 kubot that government is talking about, if there is a proper guided deregulation, because efficiency will come into play. Not that somebody will sit down somewhere there doing the right thing, then I'll be paying for his inefficiencies. So I believe that we are still paying for some other industry players' inefficiencies. So then government will come out and say, "Okay, subsidies, what are they subsidizing? The price today is 143, there is no subsidy. If there is subsidy, you can't be paying for that 143 naira 50 kubot today."
So how much should we buy a liter of oil today?
Well, as I said...
Ideally?
Ideally, it should not exceed 125, 128 naira.
So what prompted you to jump in price?
I wouldn't know, I'm not the sole operator of the industry.
For you, I play on the industry.
That is why I told you that efficiencies will have to be enhanced. Once you enhance the efficiencies, then you'll be able to save cost. And then you don't need to pass it to the consumer.
Give us an idea of how much an independent marketer like you will buy from NMPC a liter of oil, from NMPC?
Well, you see...
At a cost price?
You see, NMPC, as I said earlier on, are only last resort of supply. They are not the only one that is importing product today. A lot of marketers does. But the issue here is, once the benchmark is going up, then nobody would like to be exposed to the risk of subsidy. Unless if government comes out with a policy that will say, "Yes, these are the modelations, clear modelations, not at the end of the ever month you say X or Z." In economy, you require a long-term planning, it's not a short-term plan. It doesn't work in oil and gas. What happens to the product that are in the high sea? At the end of the month, and somebody come out and say, "Okay, this month, the benchmark is supposed to be X or Y." Then what happened to the one that I've already purchased? So it is highly technical and highly sophisticated. It's not an issue of one-time luck, no, it doesn't work like that. And that's why I am calling for the PIB bill to be passed, one, so that the guidelines will be clearly spelled out, not from me as a stakeholder, or not from you as a government agency. So that is my understanding of this industry.
All right. With the PIB and the pipeline, and with the international crude oil prices, you know, each inch upward, we're seeing 42 dollars per barrel, maybe before the next one month or two months, we're going to get about 45 or 50, you know, dollars per barrel. Where does that leave the consumer when it comes to pricing?
Well, you see, when you are talking about crude international parity of pricing, normally, as oil-producing nations, it is always our prayer for the crude to go up, not to come down, because there are a lot of benefits in the crude once it is up, because there are other things, there are other byproducts. We are not only talking about the PMS, we are talking about the AG or parathene, so on and so on.
I'm asking because for a lot of people, the concern and the fear is that once the international price, you know, each is upward, then we begin to see an increase in the pump price of oil. So that's the fear.
Yes, I agree with you, but I differ on the one aspect. I do not wish for the crude to not die. If it not dies, it affects our economy holistically. But if it goes up, it also enhances our economy holistically.
It goes up to 100 dollars per barrel, what happens to the man on the street?
No, it is good for him, because that is why the government will have to cushion the effects. It is not, you see, it is no longer a loss for the government. It is better for government to remove 10% of its excess earnings to the masses than for the crude to not die, and the government is battling with funding X or Z.
But the government is saying they don't want to pay subsidies anymore.
It's not about paying...
10% to means subsidy in one form or the other, or parathing.
Okay, when the crude was below 14 naira, were they paying subsidy?
I wouldn't know.
You see, they were not paying, even now, as we are talking, they are not paying any subsidy.
Now they said they have pulled deregulated, deregulated the sector according to them.
Well, if it is fully deregulated, fine and good, but all I'm saying is that as a Nigerian, I will never wish for the crude to be not die, because once it not dies, the economy, everything will collapse. For now, we are still operating a single economy in this country. So my prayers is that let the crude continue going up. Let government also look at areas that can cushion the issue, not necessarily subsidizing the petroleum. No, not necessarily, I'm not conversing for that. But what I'm saying, for God's sake, government should not also interfere with things that does not affect our money, like the equalization, it's not government money, it's consumers' money.
What does government really want to do with the equalization form?
No, for example, when some people are conversing for it to be scrapped, I ask, "Is it your money? It's not your money."
What is a government agency?
If it's a government agency, and so what, I'm part of the government, you are part of the government. You are working freely on the street because you are protected by the government. What is the meaning of government? Government is the functions of you and me.
If people felt that under a deregulated, you know, sector, there is no need for the PEP, there is no need for the PPRA, then...
No, 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 you do not operate any sector like that. Every sector must be guided. And if you say there is no need, then if we elect a president, there is no need for ministers. If that is the case, let the president operate the country alone, it doesn't work like that. There must be a system that governs a particular operation. That's the way it works. And the system is such that in the oil and gas, as I said earlier, we have DPR, we have PF, we have PPR, the NMPC itself is there. Okay, NMPC, for example, is also a marketer. It's an integrated national oil company. It functions as the last resource to the common man, or to Nigeria, so to say. But today, it's not no-great to the common man, since it is also selling the product at international parity. So what all we are saying here is that if there is full deregulation, then let the things that works be sustained. Then let us also look at areas that we felt that needs to be improved or needs to be readjusted. But I am not a fan of those who will just go and say, "Okay, we want full deregulation, this should go, that should go." What do you have in place?
What do some people, who will also say, people in, especially in the riverine area, the south-south part of the country and the southeast part of the country, who have been buying a liter of oil far beyond what others are buying, even before the deregulation?
They are also benefiting from equalization, that's a good...
No, but I also tell you that what is the need of equalization?
No, they are benefiting.
If I'm buying oil in Lagos, 400 and 45 naira, and I'm buying 200?
They are having floating retail outlets, they are having floating retail outlets.
In how many communities?
In virtually...
Maybe a very small percentage?
No, 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 no. I was one of those people that really supported for those floating station during the GMD, so that to meet up the earnings of those riverine areas. And I was also part of those committee members that recommended that they should also be included among those that their product will be equalized. So therefore, they are all beneficial. Let me tell you one thing about equalization. Before the advent of the collapse of our pipelines in Nigeria, it was only 20% that were being bridged. But today, virtually in the whole country, the only area that are not talking about bridging probably is only Lagos. Virtually, all the communities are under bridging, because the pipelines are no longer there. So how do you move the product?
So make a lot, what is bridging all about?
Bridging is movement of a product from one point to the other. In particular, moving from coastal to the inland airport, or from one coastal to the other, where they have itis of transporting product either by water, or by air, or by whatever means.
And that's why it's expensive?
No, no, it's not expensive. You see, all this is built-in. It is, you see, as I said, this has been in existence since 1973. And it was just like cardboard, a bomb vitter. They have also internalized their equalization. That's why you buy the same price of bomb vitter and Meduguri and that of Lagos. So if we can do that on the food products, why don't you do it on things that move the products around?
Are you categorically saying today that the price of oil is 143 naira, 145 naira across the country?
Yes, definitely. In fact, in some cases even, you will have some disparity of 1 naira 50 kubot below.
Whether in Meduguri or in Asara or in Lagos?
Whatever, wherever, it's the same price, the same price.
The major issue of contention is the liters of oil that we consume, the quantity of oil that we consume on a daily basis. You get to hear 50 million, you get to hear 30 million, you get to hear 60 million. But us, how much do we consume daily?
Well, I think this is a function of statutory organizations like PPR, NMPC in particular. They are the ones that are competent to give out the national consumption. But I knew when I was ITMAN president, I was a member of the Petroleum Presidential Regulatory Agency at that board level. Then we did a holistic job, and we were able to come out with 30 million liters of national consumption at that time. So, but as of today, definitely, we have activities have increased, so many things have increased. So I will not be in a position to know exactly what is the national consumption today, but I believe it is still in the neighborhood of 35 to 45 million liters.
So the statistic being rounded around of 56 million is not correct?
No, 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 I am not in a position to say that, because I ceased to be a member of PPR when my tenure finished as ITMAN president. So it's only those who are in PPR that will be conversant and competent to give us the national consumption today.
The biggest challenge for independent marketers like you would be the forex liquidity, as well as the many, you know, windows of foreign exchange. How do you think government can help players like you in the industry to overcome such challenge? Especially now that you're being allowed to import product?
Well, I believe these are functions of the CBN, and alongside with the NMPC being also the major national oil company in this country. I believe we had some meetings some months ago, and I think GMV of NMPC is willing to support other players in the industry to access Forex, to access, to access Forex at the same rate with NMPC. I think if that happens, I think the industry will be better off, and there will be any complaint of monopoly from the government side that is NMPC. So I think with the current position of the GMV, I think we are good to go.
Are you afraid of any kind of monopoly with this price modulation so far?
No, I think it's not about being panicked or being afraid of any situation, but it's being objective with the principles of economy. You don't just go into an arena that the ground is not level, and you think you are strong, you will just be swinging against the current, and eventually you lose money. That is it.
Okay, and how much amount of money are we talking about?
That could be colossal, it could be also, it could even make you to run down your company.
Okay, so how do we make the petroleum industry, especially the downstream, you know, attract foreign investment?
I think it still boils down to the PIB bill, because that is the only guideline that will keep everybody in check and in shape. And with that, if the PIB bill is out, every company will understand its limitations. Because it's good, once you are trying to be in a particular area, it's good, you know, the depth of that area, so that you know whether you can remain afloat, or you will perish. So that is it.
Okay. What are the investment opportunities in a fully deregulated environment? I don't get it.
Yeah, I think in a fully deregulated environment, where also the economy is well-guided, I think it will give each and every company an opportunity to operate optimally, and also to save overhead costs, so that the company could make more profit. But in a situation or environment where my arrow affects your own prudence, it doesn't fly. So some of the opportunities that will be opportune to have the level playground, just like the NMPC has today. If each and every marketer will have such opportunity that, yes, you can import all the products, and you will access Forex at the same rate with that of NMPC, then you have no complaint. NMPC, of course, is bigger, it has bigger overhead costs, and we operate on real time, will be able to save costs, therefore be able to make more money.
Okay. A marketer is making profit now, yes or no?
At present, definitely, if we are not making profit, you will not be there. But the profit is not enough, because the margin is not enough. So, but once the environment is fully deregulated, definitely marketers will make more money, because efficiency will come into play.
How much profit will be competitive?
Competitive? You see, when you are investing maybe 5 billion, and someone is investing 500 million, definitely, the profit margin will not be the same. Unfortunately, where the level playground is not there, then sometimes you can invest as much as 10 billion, and the profit could be as lean as 2 million.
Okay. Where are you with your findings? I do understand that... I do understand that, um, NiP Co was building one or two refineries some time ago. Where are you with that?
No, no, no. NiP Co, we have not yet ventured into refining. I think what, uh, we are venturing into is, uh, gas. Gas projects, that's what we are into. And for now, we are doing wonderfully well in the gas area because we understand that's the future of the world. So, but, uh, refining also will soon be there. But until when the P I B bill is out, then we will be able to understand how we're going to the refining business. Because the refining business is a long-term investment.
Could that be the reason why a lot of people are not venturing into that?
Sure, because you have to understand the attendant consequences.
Okay. What's your take on the gas pipeline from Ajau Kuta to Kaduna to Kanu?
That is, uh, that is one, that's, that's going to be a breakthrough for Nigeria and it's one of the best projects that has ever been thought of by N N P C and the federal government. It will definitely improve upon the industries and it will enhance business activities in, uh, in the country. I think it is a wonderful, uh, project that will, uh, help this country out of its economic woes.
Okay. And finally, while waiting for the P I B on bill, you know, to be passed, what should governments be doing right now to cushion the effect of the pricing on the common man on the street?
I think, uh, for now, government is not interested in, uh, subsidizing any petroleum products you rightly put earlier on. The only thing is that, uh, we should, uh, ask other players to be more prudent so that the price moderation should not be too high.
Okay, players should be prudent.
Yes.
But people say, I'm putting in my money, so how can you be asking me for prudent?
No, you see, there are other things there that is not too clear. You see, when somebody is supplying a product and that person is supplying this product, has a lot of exigencies, a lot of staffs and he has to pay them. And he said, there's no one government to pay subsidy. And then it means all of you that are buying that product from that person, you are paying for the subsidy indirectly. Because, uh, when I know my overhead is running into billions and at my own private company, the overhead is less than two hundred million. So definitely, and I'm compelled to buy this product from you. So there is no prudence there. So the prudence in court here is when I'm allowed to have access to this forex, I'm allowed to import all the products just like the other player, then definitely, there wouldn't be any much pressure on the consumer. So the problem is all from the source of the product. If the source of the product are being, uh, achieved with less pressure, then the pressure on the consumer will be less as well. That's my own understanding.
Okay. For you, what is the biggest challenge in the downstream sector?
The biggest challenge in the downstream sector, as far as I'm concerned, is all about, uh, I would say number one, efficiency. Number two, source of the product. Number three, uh, monopoly. Once all these things are fizzled out, I think the industry will be better, it will be healthy.
All right. Alajiamino Abdul Thaidur Serkinhurmi Adomawa, Group Executive Director, Corporate Services, NiP Co. Thank you very much indeed.
It's my pleasure.